To start, so I will call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quaidno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
He's coming.
He said here from across the room. He's just coming up to the podium now.
Okay.
Thank you. And he's already standing. Would the rest of us please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is council member board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. And we have quite a long list of minutes, so I won't read them all out. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding any of the meeting minutes that are posted? Okay, hearing none. We will accept all of those into our public record. So our next agenda item is the monthly report from the Joint Rock Lake Committee, and we have Pat Stevens here tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the City Council. My name is Pat Stevens, and thank you for having me tonight to give you a little bit of update on some of our activities. I thought I'd start out today by just giving you an update on our committee membership. You may be aware that we operate under an ordinance in combination with the town, and that under that ordinance, we're supposed to have two city members as well as three town members. And as long as I've been on it, we've never had that, by the way. But so maybe that's aspirational. But I did want to mention that your two city representatives, myself and Lauren Eager, and you may be aware that Wendy Catalani Davies was our town chair for quite a while, and she resigned, so that position did become vacant. And so that lead us with Dan Smith is the sole town representative. And then, just recently, however, Dan Barnish, another town resident, was appointed. So now we're up to two town representatives and two city representatives. So we are moving forward with that. Moving on, I wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about wake boats and just give you an update about what we've been up to in regard to that particular issue. And I'm guessing that some of you have probably heard or seen a fair amount about that. Wake boats has become a pretty widely focused on topic right now. You may be aware that in the legislature, there's been bills that have been introduced. There's been a lot of discussion on a lot of different lakes. There's been ordinances that have been passed. Again, a lot of particular focus on that issue. And the thing that, of course, people are interested in is that these boats do have the ability to create a large wake. They don't necessarily have to do that and operate in that fashion all the time, but they can do that. And there's some concerns about some of the potential impacts associated with that. Things like spreading of invasive species, when waters might be discharged from ballast waters that are used to create that wake, damage that occurs to the fishery or aquatic plants because of scouring, the way prop wash happens on some of those boats. And again, just a few issues also in regard to concern about shoreline and impacts on shorelines that have come up in regard to the use of wake boats. So that, of course, generated some interest in taking a look at that particular issue. We want to make sure that, you know, our lake is used by the public and have an opportunity to do that in ways that also protect the lake. So we had gone through a pretty extensive process to get some information regarding wake boating. There's a ton of different reports out there right now. Again, a hot topic and a lot of different opinions about it as well. I did send to you all today, and I hope you had a copy to get it and apologize. I wish I would have got it to you earlier. But that has a fair amount of data in it, and there's a lot more than what's in there. But a couple of things I'd highlight for you in that report. Again, we talk about some of those things that are potential issues with wake boats. We also reviewed a number of different policy options to consider in regard to how to ensure that our lake is protected. Those range from on one end, actually, just monitoring things and see what happens. Again, you've got other entities that are looking at different solutions. The information is still developing, the science on some of these things. And by the way, that's not unusual in the environmental area. You often find yourself in a situation where you don't have, you know, perfect information. In any business, the same thing is true, right? So that creates a little bit of a challenge as you deal with some of these issues. But at any rate, again, kind of doing the full range of things from on one side doing that, the monitoring, next level up might be education. And I would suspect we'd want to do some of that regardless of what recommendation, if any, goes through. And then to up to and including ordinances or supporting state legislation. So that's kind of the range of things that we discussed. What the committee landed on was to recommend a depth and distance requirement. So operating these boats at a certain depth and at a certain distance from shore to try to minimize any sort of negative impacts. And what we had thrown out there was a depth requirement of 30 feet, along with a setback from shore of 70 feet. Not for any place, if you're just operating outside and not in that enhanced wake mode, you know, then you're treated as any other boat. But again, this would be operating in those closer areas when you are actually, you know, operating and to do that wake boat surfing. So-
Pat, could I just interrupt you? I think, did you say distance? Could you repeat the distance from shore that you're recommending?
Yes. What we had suggested in our, in our document was 700 foot from shore.
700. Okay, yeah.
Sure. 30 feet deep.
Thanks.
So again, there's, if you look at the data, there's different numbers out there. But again, that's where we landed during our discussions. I did want to mention that, maybe you're aware of this, the Rock Lake Improvement Association did a joint recommendation, a joint presentation with us. The town, one of those combined. So they did have a different recommendation than we did. The recommendation from the association was to prohibit the use of wake boat technology on the lake. Not wake boats itself, but again, the use of that technology. So I think where we landed, I think our rationale was that we wanted to be protected, protective of the environment, and at the same time, try to allow different types of users to enjoy the resources that we have here in Lake Mills. So that's kind of a short, short update on that. We did do our presentation, again, as I mentioned, to the town board on the 11th. Really didn't get any feedback. It was really information that we provided and also others provided at the particular meeting. And as you're, I'm sure, aware that the board's going to be changing, so we really don't know what the next steps are. From the committee's standpoint, probably what we'd want to do is, once things get settled down, is ask for another opportunity to go in and present and try to provide them with some information. So that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. Again, really appreciate all the input we've got also from the public. I did want to mention that we did specifically hold a public meeting to allow folks to come in and chime in. The report that you have, one of the attachments includes all the public comments that we did receive, so that is available to you, as well as some other items in that index that might be of interest. So that's it on wake boating. Just quick, I also wanted to mention that the town-
Pat, can I ask a question, if you're moving on to another subject? I'm just curious if JRLC team talked about how this would be enforced?
I think enforcement is a huge issue, and we've had discussions about it in the context of this, but also in the context of just Rock Lake in general. We recognize that, I think there's a lot of folks that think enforcement is an issue in general in regard to activities on the lake. But beyond that, I think, you know, this would be a challenge if you're trying to keep folks at a particular distance. But from our perspective, it wasn't really a reason not to move forward and create something. The idea would be that you'd hope folks would want to comply with the requirements and protect the lake and do it that way. But one of our recommendations is to, is we do need to look at enforcement on the lake. But if the other, I should add, another portion of our recommendations was if the town was to go forward with the actual ordinance to take the first year really to educate before issuing any sort of citations or things like that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else on that one? I also just wanted to mention that the town did make a motion to seek a consultant to create a scope statement for dredging at the area between the culvert on Cedar Lane and the turbidity curtain. If you've seen that, been kind of an ongoing issue, that whole channel. So that was, I think, from our perspective, a good move to see that move forward. The ideal, if you could clean that out and keep that maintained, you would be able to hopefully keep some pollutants and other sediments from moving into the lake. So we'll see how that goes. What we plan on doing, I believe, is probably offering our assistance to try to help as that goes forward. There was a permit in place that would have allowed some sort of dredging to go on there, which is more expansive than what their, the town is now talking about. But that permit did expire, so they will need to reapply for the permit, and we'll see what all that takes. And again, I think we'd be interested in trying to help, you know, pull together any information we could to help with that application. And final thing, I just wanted to commend you for your actions on the dam order. I think it's a positive step to see that move forward. I think it's good from a cleanup standpoint to start out with and just making sure the language is, is good and that the order provides a clear path to move forward. So I think that's a positive thing. Some good changes, I think, in terms of maintaining water in the spring. I know there's a change in regarding to make sure our amphibians maintaining good condition as well. So again, I think it's a good package. We did have some discussion, maybe just about process. And one of the things, and I guess truth in advertising, that I had brought to the committee is, would it be possible for those that are kind of working with that particular order to have an opportunity to sit down and perhaps have a discussion before that final order gets flopped on the city's lap? So I think it would be good for the city, to the extent that they can, to try to have an opportunity to see that order before it's finalized, where that, what that looks like. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Pat. Any further questions for Pat or for the committee's work? And maybe just one thing I'll clarify. Thank you for the updates on the wake boats. I think a lot of us are interested in, you know, all things Rock Lake. But just to remind everybody, any boating ordinance would be in the hands of the town of Lake Mills, right? So the city wouldn't have a role in adopting an ordinance regarding wake boats or enforcing that. So we'll see what the town does.
Yep. All right.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, our next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mary, would you like to start tonight?
Sure. I have correspondence, the information that Pat described from JRLC regarding wake boat information, a memo on the March 11 speaker at the Rotary, and also some correspondence from Erin Cox from the DNR regarding clarification on the water level order.
Great, thanks. Greg?
It's pretty quiet till this afternoon. I did get the memo from Pat on the wake boats, which was nice. And also, probably not a complaint, but just a concern about city plows. That's it.
Okay. Michelle?
I also had Pat's email, and I had a couple of emails regarding the Sentry Building and an idea combining the concept that Cambridge used, an empty building, and how to, how that might apply to Sentry. And that was pretty much it.
Great, thank you. Steve?
Also had the wake boat email that arrived this afternoon, and I did receive a phone call about city staffing.
Okay, thank you. In addition to those, I think I received most of those. I forgot to mention at our last meeting that we received a resignation letter from Catherine Bishop, who was serving on our zoning board of appeals. She had to step down from that. So thanks to her for serving on that. I had a constituent contact about senior housing and one about a tree damage claim. So those are in addition to what's already been mentioned. Okay, so now it is time for our questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments can also be made for items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting is called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign sheet provided. If there's anyone online who wants to speak, please type your name and address in the chat feature, and our meeting clerk will identify that. So I know we have one gentleman in the room who registered ahead, so if you want to come on up.
I certainly want to yield to anybody who had comments on the agenda first.
Oh, okay. Is there anyone who has public comments on the agenda, any agenda items tonight? See a few people logged in, but nobody's chiming in. So go ahead, Judge.
All right. Well, thank you and good evening, members of the council, Attorney Drescher, Chief Schroeder, other members of the public comments. My address, my name is Will Gruber. My address is North 7214 Deer Lake Lane. That's in the town of Lake Mills. And I'm here to provide comments on my reelection to the circuit court. I'm currently the Branch One Circuit Court Judge. I've been making my way around the county at various towns and villages. This is my first city appearance, and I do thank the council for allowing me just a couple of minutes here to reintroduce myself. I was appointed to the court in 2018. I was elected in 2019. Prior to my time on the court, I was the city attorney in the city of Watertown. And prior to that, I was an assistant corporation counsel for Dodge County. In my time on the circuit court, I've walked, I've worked across all the case types, all the jurisdictions. I've presided over 36 jury trials. I'm currently the chairperson of the Community Justice Collaborating Commission, or council, excuse me, I'm the previous drug treatment, alcohol treatment presiding judge. And I've also sat on the Security and Facilities Committee. This is ultimately up to the voters, but I believe I've done right by my obligations to ensure the fair resolution of cases, ensuring fair play, ensuring cases are processed efficiently, but with a high quality of justice as well. I have endorsements across the local bar, nonprofit businesses, former judges, current judges. And I certainly have done other things outside of the courthouse to contribute my time and energy to the community. I'm a member of Lake Mills Rotary. I volunteer at the Humane Society. And I think I've demonstrated the personal integrity and accountability that is what's required for this, this office. As I already indicated, I live in the town of Lake Mills with my, my wife, Annie. She grew up in Watertown, and we both fell in love with the Lake Mills area a few, a few years ago. So again, I thank the council for allowing me just a brief opportunity to reintroduce myself. I think that's an important thing for judges to do with these six-year terms. It's, there's always some risk of becoming a bit reclusive. So again, thank you for the opportunity. And by the way, this is a beautiful facility. I'm not trying to just butter anybody up, but this is, this is a fine council chamber. And that'll conclude my comments. And thank you again.
Thank you, Judge Cooper. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to the city manager's report. And I don't know if anyone else has noticed, but our city manager is not here this evening. So I'd like to say congratulations to Drake and his family, and I've just welcomed a new son, Samuel, into their family. So congratulations to Drake and Cassie and Alice, and wish them well as they're getting acquainted with their new family member. So Chief Schroeder is sitting in the city manager's chair this evening, and I'm sure he's prepared for any and all questions that we, we might have. So the city manager's report, we do have all of our standard financial documents and a couple of PD monthly reports. So Chief Schroeder, is there anything else you want to add?
I think you did most of my job for me. I've watched Drake do it many times, and he normally says there's a lot of reports in the packet. So no, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Are there any questions this evening?
Mrs. Kurler?
Steve, yes.
I actually had one. Maybe Sam can help me. In the general fund check register on page four, we have a large rental from United Rental, and I'm just wondering if we have a long-term rental on a piece of equipment we should maybe consider buying. Just kind of curious as to what that charge was for.
Oh, yeah.
Steve, I would have to look it up, but I can do that right now.
Perfect. Yeah, it was like $33,000 for a rental.
I see that one you're speaking of. I'll have to look and see what exactly that was on. As you see, we have lots of payments, so I don't know off the top of my head.
Not a problem.
Well, while she's doing that, I'll ask a question that's also from the general fund financial statement, but I think Chief Schroeder may be in a position to answer it. It reminded me that we have a federal public safety grant, as shown on the first page, and with some, you know, questions about the status of all federal, federal funding right now coming from the new Trump administration. Do you, do you have any information about that grant, or whether that's going to be impacted, or whether we can still rely on it?
I can tell you, as of now, we did receive an initial communication saying that payments would be put on hold, that ASAP, the system that the federal government uses to make payments, was going to put a hold on any payments until they did a review that was initially ordered by President Trump. Shortly after, within a couple of days, we got another email saying that it was back open and payments would be processed, and we actually submitted a payment in the beginning of February, or a payment request under the COPS grant, and we did receive that payment shortly thereafter. So to my knowledge at this point, payments under the COPS grant are not going to be impacted in any way.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. And I don't recall where things are at, but do you still have a, a position that's vacant that's partially funded by that grant?
We do. We have one, one position we filled that is being funded by the grant, and then we have a position that is scheduled to be filled on July 1st or around July 1st in this year's budget, which would be the second position.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sam was having enough time?
Oh. Yep. Actually, Eric, the Parks Director, helped me out on this one real quick because it was actually his purchase, and it was the purchase of the scissor lift from the capital improvement plan, Steve.
Okay. So we actually purchased a scissors lift through them?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes, I have a question. This just caught my attention, Chief, when I was looking at both December and January of your monthly report, and just noticed that the largest, one of the largest bars in both cases was the parking complaints, both of them running over 200. Could you speak to the nature of those?
The vast majority of, the majority of them would be winter parking or overnight parking violations.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions under the city manager's report and the documents that we have? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to council business. So our first item under council business is a consent agenda. So we have two items regarding weights and measures license applications. So if a council member wants to talk about any one of those individually, you can ask to have it removed from the consent agenda. Otherwise, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the new weights and measures license application for King's Operating LLC consent agenda.
Second? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Quaidno, seconded by Ms. Schmager, and under consent agendas, we don't have any discussion. So Sam, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is a presentation from the Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation Department regarding work that they do on Rock Lake, including the wetland study from last year. So welcome, Colton Hutchinson. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, so just go through kind of like some of the efforts that we continue to do around Rock Lake, and then kind of go into some of the results that we did from the wetland study over this past year. So, next slide, please. So these are some of the efforts that we do not on an annual basis. And one big thing I would just push, just so people from the public and everyone knows, is there is a Rock Lake management plan, and these are two sites that you can kind of find it at. And it is current right now. It is good through 2028. So we'll probably start working on updating it in the year 2027. And you'll kind of see that from some of the stuff down below here, which is usually required when you're updating one. One being the lake-wide aquatic plant intercept survey, which is kind of shown in the picture to the right there. Those are all the points that we would collect information from throughout the lake. So it looks like about 863 points there would be data collected from. That's anywhere from like depth, sediment, aquatic plants present, and then like what type of aquatic plants are present, and then the abundance of them. So that's usually done every five years, and try to do one right before the plan would have to be updated. And then also is the Mill Pond one that we just did this previous year. So we'd done them recently back in 2017, 2022, and 24. So I would probably plan to do that again in 27 as well. And then there's some of the shoreline habitat surveys. So that's kind of like our, going around the entire shore of Rock Lake and looking at every single parcel and noting like what type of shoreline habitat is there, like if there's a retaining wall, riprap, native plants, all that kind of stuff. And we'll take pictures of each of those, and we have that on our GIS system. So that's what we look at. We use that with our zoning, and then we also do that with the city zoning too. If they like want to see something from like historically, what the shoreline might have looked like, and then what it's been altered to, they can kind of see that information since we collect it.
Yep. How far back does that information go?
Um, the most, the oldest one was, I believe, back in 2012.
Okay.
So it's only more recent being collected and stuff. And the one that was done in '22 wasn't done recent enough to be included because the DNR has like the shoreline tool assessment thing. And any ones done like after '23 or in the year '23 will pop up on that and kind of show you like numbers on that too. So that's something we're going to try and get that data loaded onto as well, so in the future. And then also the nearshore fish surveys, that's usually done between LWCD and DNR fish biologists and techs. So we are looking to do that possibly next year as well, just to kind of get a new updated one. So the most recent one was done back in 2014. So, and then next slide. And then just some more annual efforts that are going on. And excuse the four sites, but there are a lot more than just four sites that are done. And it can get kind of confusing of like which sites are being collected for stuff. But there's sites being collected up at Rock Creek on Hope Lake Road, County A, Cedar Lane, the crossing by the Mill Jala Shores Park over on the town side. And then also, obviously, there's sampling being done at the deep hole locations of both Mud and Rock Lake. And those are done typically May through October. We're collecting samples once a month at there. That's usually at the surface, and then collecting like phosphorus, chlorophyll, temperature, and then doing like a temperature profile as well. So that's being done. And then there's also nutrient testing being done at all those stream sites as well and a deep hole site, and then also at the outlet of Rock Lake, which is the dam at the Mill Pond. And then we also have some volunteers that collect data down at Rock Creek at the Stony Road Crossing, just downstream of the treatment plant. So there's a lot of good testing being done, a lot of good data being collected. We also do AIS refreshers for the volunteers around the lake. That's usually a lot of people through the association. So they're always out monitoring throughout the year, and then I kind of give them a refresher every year, getting in kind of ones to look out for, refresh on some identification. Also do the Healthy Lakes Program, which you can see down there on the right. Those are kind of some of the different types of healthy lakes practices you can incorporate, anywhere from fish sticks, native plant ins, diversion, rock infiltration, and rain gardens. So just trying to lower the amount of nutrients getting to the lake from land. And then we also do the Clean Boats, Clean Waters. And then we also do the Clean Boats, Clean Waters. Last year, there was three inspectors paid, and it's done through a grant, which also the city and the town help kind of cover the cost of the share that needs to be added on to get that completed. So, happy to have you guys help out with all that and that funding. And we are having all of those three inspectors return this year, and then I kind of just help update them too on anything new that they might be wanting to look out for. And then just a continued source for anything related water resources around Rock Lake and stuff, so that's just some of the stuff we do. So, and then, thing we did last year was the wetland study. And I just start out with, um, this is kind of how we got some of the information or imagery to collect for the maps that you're going to see in the next couple of slides. So this kind of shows areas where we flew over a county drone that we have over a lot of this area, and kind of got like footage or snapshots of areas throughout the whole wetlands, and we actually had to do a couple of special use permits to fly them around that because it's all state natural area or state parks. So you actually, if you want to fly a drone over any state natural areas or state parks, I would definitely recommend checking these permits and contacting, just so you wouldn't get any penalties or fees if any, if you were to get caught. It's, they're pretty much free to send in and stuff, they don't like cost anything, so definitely something I would just advise people to do if they have any drones and fly them around those areas. And then down in the left is kind of like a Google imagery, so you can see the difference between the bigger map and the little snapshot I took. So we actually used a lot of Google imagery because it had some of the leaf on stuff, and we were able to kind of distinguish between like the cattails, which are more of that brown area versus like the sedge meadows and more of the tamarack stuff, being all that green, and then like the area with like green and dots. So that was able to help us a lot, so we were going back and forth between like the actual like photos that we took with the drone and the Google to kind of make all these maps that I'm going to show you next. So, that's just some of the background, and then you can go to next slide. So this is what we worked on, kind of mapping out. Every dot you see is a sample site that we went to, to use like the protocol from the DNR called the Rapid Floristic Quality Assessment, where we pretty much go to a spot in the wetlands, and then we kind of like start a timer, walk around for about five minutes in that kind of general area, and kind of note like what the main types of plant species we see. And then after that five minutes, we decide like the total like coverage of each of those plant species, and we write that all down in a worksheet, and then that kind of like generates like, from this snapshot area, what is this community like, what type of community it is, and how healthy is it, based off of like the sea values and floristic quality ratings? So you can kind of see down there, I have high, medium. So on this map, it's, there's only high and medium sites that we found. And then there's also the elevation that was snapped, courtesy of the city surveyor from Strand and stuff going to collect that. And then we also have the difference between the summer max and what that actual elevation is, so if it's in red, that means that area would be underwater at summer high max, and if it's in green, that means that area would be dry. So, that's that, and then also note, just for looking at all these maps going forward, we're pretty much looking at any elevation area that's 828, because that's about the summer max of the water levels right now, up to 830, so that's why you actually see that one. I just kind of wanted to kind of gauge and make sure we were kind of mapping out the right areas. So that one's about 830.96, so that makes sense why it's outside of my mapped areas, because we're only mapping 830 to 828 for wetlands. So there are definitely wetlands outside of that 830 possibly that weren't mapped, but that's what we're looking at, and that was what was required from the DNR for all this stuff. And then, just going into the different types of community types, you can kind of read and see it, but kind of all that blue is obviously open water, and then the brown is open water, but it's typically during the summer covered with like lily pads, spatter dock, aquatic plants that kind of get to the surface. So that's why we count it as like a floating lead marsh, because it is kind of like a transitional wetland community, going from more like open water to plants that are kind of just wet and stuff, so that's just a snapshot of that. Go to the next slide, yep.
Um, Colton, actually, before you go on, I wanted to ask if you could tell us just a little bit more about the floristic quality. I mean, and, and I should note, I think I saw that Erin Cox from DNR has also joined us on Zoom, so if we have questions about that, that tool, you know, that you're using, she may be able to help as well, but, so what does it mean when something is higher, medium, or low or exceptional? Is it, is it the, like the plant is rare, or is it the community is rare?
Yeah, so that's the actual community, so that's taking in all of the information for like each plant, and then that community at that area is either exceptional, high, medium, or low. Those are the four categories for it. So, if it's exceptional, that means it's very good habitat, I would say. There's not too much wrong with it, there's probably likely a lot of like very highly valuable species there. I'll get into some of the specific ones, but there are like a type of couple willows and then like sedge plants that are kind of very high, they have like these high sea values as well, so that's kind of what they are, and that's just kind of what that is.
Oh, Colton, do you mind if I interrupt? I'm sorry, yes, hi, this is Erin. Is it okay if I jump in at this point?
Absolutely, that'd be great. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you so much for accommodating me via Zoom, I appreciate it. Yeah, just like you said, I'm Erin Cox, I'm with the Wisconsin DNR. I wanted to speak if I could about that Rapid Floristic Quality Assessment Tool. Thank you, Colton, for carrying the water on, on this presentation. I just wanted to jump in and state that I think in an ideal world, we would be able to assess fully the floristic quality of some of these wetland communities, but that would entail us going through a community and identifying every plant. Keep in mind, each community that is mapped is one of those sort of swatches of color, right? And there's probably even different sub-communities within just one color that Colton has mapped. So, um, in order to ident, identify these plants, if you haven't done it before, it literally sometimes entails pulling out a handheld magnifying glass and sort of keying things out using a dichotomous key in a plant book. There can be various plant books for if you're looking at a shrub, or a tree, or a flower, or a sedge, and so really what I'm trying to paint the picture of here is that it can be really tedious and hard work, it can be super time consuming, and frankly, that can be really expensive. And so, DNR's Rapid Floristic Quality Assessment Tool, you also hear it called the RFQA, was developed to try to, there's two huge benefits to it. Number one, this tool is usable by folks who are not expert botanists, such as myself, and also it's, it's meant to be really fast. It's meant to be quick and dirty, it's meant to allow for us to hit multiple sites and to get a really good snapshot of the quality in that wetland. Those sea values that Colton mentioned, those are a constant, those numbers have been around for, I would say, at least 20 years. Sea scores are a zero to 10 scale. Zero is for species that are introduced, they're non-native, and then anything that is a score of a 10 is very selective, tends to grow in areas that have low human influence to them. So what we do is we go through, like Colton said, we identify plants down to the genus level, not the species level, and we identify the cover of those plants. So we assign a score to the entire community, and that entire community score is composite sea score. It's driven by whatever is the most dominant plant within that community. So if you imagine that we've got, you know, predominantly cattails and maybe a smattering of some high-quality plants, but there's really not many of them, we're going to likely see a very low sea score, something closer to a zero for a community like that. So, it isn't a perfect tool, it's meant to be quick and dirty, if I'm being frank, but surprisingly, it does deliver really accurate results. And so just keep in mind, as Colton's talking, the higher the score numerically, the closer to 10, that equals higher quality wetlands. But like Colton said, he's graciously kind of mapped that out with those starbursts on the map that correspond to low, medium, high, and exceptional. So, that is what the, the low, medium, high, and exceptional corresponds to those numerical values. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you so much, Erin, appreciate that, that background and explanation.
Yeah, so this is just kind of looking at more of those. In my future slides, I have like, kind of going through like each of these communities, and then like the plants that we have listed and the sea values, so these are kind of just like the overall kind of view of it and stuff, so you can kind of see that typically when we get closer to the open water, there's usually a little bit lower value floristic areas. You'll kind of note that a lot of the cattails are obviously going to be really low in their FQA scores versus usually the sedge meadows, the shrub car and stuff are a little bit higher typically, so.
Is this slide, this is County A?
Yeah, this is County A, kind of going through, so.
So way south end.
Yep, on the north end, you have what we call Marsh Lake, part of Rock Lake, and then down below is, you can just kind of start to see the top of Mud Lake, so. And then next slide? And then this is just kind of all the spots that we got around Mud Lake area. I'd just point out that the kind of like teal colored one called the rudimental wetmeadow, that's actually like a giant like, um, non-native frag stand that we kind of found. So that's a invasive species that we kind of found, and it was kind of interesting that it kind of grew in a complete like circle for the most part, and it was just a complete stand of it, so I did already reach out to the DNR wildlife biologist for that area and let them know, so we might be doing some efforts in the future to kind of get that under control and stuff, yep.
So you just answered a question, or part of a question that I was going to ask you, and that was, are there certain wetland types that we do not want in that area?
Yeah, so I mean, those, definitely the ones with invasive frag would be one that we, we'd want to get under control. Obviously, the rudimental emergent marsh is also predominantly invasives, it's like cattails for the most part, and at this point, pretty much all cattails are hybrid or invasive. Typically, there's a giant monoculture of it pretty much out there right now, so that usually just grows slowly, but that's, it would be a big undertaking to kind of control all that. You'd usually have to get lots of grants and funding to do that kind of thing. There, there could be efforts in the future, if we were able to get like stakeholders and partners to do some stuff. I could see like clearing out some areas, more for accessibility for like recreation in the future possibly, but at this point, I wouldn't see trying to like control all the cattails around these wetlands. And then I guess I'll just point out too, like, when you see the word ruderal, or yeah, ruderal, that pretty much means like non-inva, or invasive, pretty much, so that's why those are kind of at the front of that too, so. And then, yeah, I just seen the snapshot of all the other areas, so. Kind of an interesting area. Uh, next slide? And then this is just like another way to look at those maps and the community types, just kind of like the percentage of them compared to the others, and then like the amount of acreage for them that we were able to map. So obviously, majority of it is that rudimental emergent marsh being pretty much cattails. You also got the sedge meadow making up about 20%, and then you got like the tamarack swans making up about 24%, so there is definitely some still good wetlands, but obviously the stuff closest to the open water is mostly the cattails at this point, so. And then you can just kind of see the amount of acreages, so kind of the same thing, just looking at percentage, just a different way of interpreting data, so. Uh, next slide? And then this is kind of the more meats of the data, kind of seeing like individual areas, so down below of each of these, you'll kind of see like pictures actually taken at these sites of kind of like what they look like and stuff, so obviously that wetmeadow I was talking about, that's that giant frag stand, all that stuff standing about eight to 12 feet tall, and it's just a giant monoculture of it. Obviously, a little bit of cattails around the edges of it, but predominantly that, and you can see their sea values are very low too. Invasives don't get a very high sea value, just because obviously they're invasive, they're not going to have that good quality compared to other species. And then going over the emergent marsh, so because it's majority made up of cattails, that's why it's kind of the ruderal emergent marsh instead of just like a regular emergent marsh, it's because of that high percentage of cattails. And then you can kind of just see some of the other species that were also visible there. So because of them kind of having a little bit of that wiregrass sedge, that's kind of one of those like special species that are kind of like very high in sea values, it kind of ups some of the scores possibly depending on them, so that's kind of that information. And I'll just note too that, um, all of these are kind of like the averages of the amount of sites we took from those types of communities, so these are just averages of them. I didn't want to go through every single 30 sites and look at all the data for you guys, so just taking averages of everything. Next slide? And then, just to bring it up, since it was found out there, uh, these are just some of the characteristics, if you guys are out there looking at frag mighties, these are kind of the difference between non-native and native frag, so. One of the big things I always tell people to look for is those little black fungal spots. The native will actually have them underneath the sheaths of the plant, so if you pull back the sheaths or the leave areas, it'll get exposed, and then you'll see those black dots, it'll be native. If you don't see them, it's typically invasive. And then also just like the headstocks, the invasives are a lot bulkier compared to the natives, they're a lot lighter, there's less seed heads, they're a little bit more delicate, they don't typically grow in a giant monoculture stand, they're a little bit more spaced out, so. Just a little bit of information. And we are looking to go out with some DNR staff this summer to collect some samples of them, because they're doing a DNA kind of project throughout the state, so we're going to try and get some samples of some of the frags, because there are like concerns of like hybridization between natives and non-natives, so we'll get some samples too taken, so. Next slide? And then these are two more wetland community types. Like I said, the floating lead marsh, that's kind of right along the shoreline typically, what you would see, lily pads and stuff, so that was kind of what we found there, picture of that, and then also the emergent marsh. It's more made up of like bull rushes and native reed canary grass typically. So, that's one of those, it didn't have like a super high like FQA, it was kind of in that medium to high possibly, it wasn't, there weren't any exceptional ones of those, so.
Thanks for the question. So the, I like this emergent marsh table, and I'm curious to know, what is the likelihood of something like a sedge which has a high sea value, even though its coverage is lower, taking over like cattails? Or how do, how did, like something in this case, I'm guessing its overall score would be fairly large, because 50% is 5.4, but you've got this cattail piece in there that's bringing it down, so I'm curious, how, how does that play out, and how does like time help either help it or hinder something like this emergent marsh?
Yeah, I, it all comes down to sometimes just the water fluctuations, sometimes the cat, um, them coming up and stuff, but typically when you start getting cattails and they're kind of well-established, they're eventually going to slowly just kind of take over those areas typically, I would say. The sedgees will definitely hold on for quite a while, they're definitely holding on in this area right now. I wouldn't say that the cattails are taking over yet, but I could see down the road if like mangling isn't happening, that they could slowly take over, so. Uh, next slide, if no more questions? So this was one of the bigger ones that we got a lot of kind of sampling taken of, and it's kind of like the shrub car, so a lot more of your, like your lowland trees or kind of shrubby, woody kind of species being present, being like the dogwoods, the bogbirds, winter berry, so, and then also like willow shrubs and stuff. So, growing up to about six feet or eight feet tall, we would consider those a lot of more shrubs. So, there's a lot of good diversity in these as well, so you can kind of see there's a ray of difference. We also had the hoary willow, which was pretty much a perfect score, 10, so it was zero from 10. We also had the hoary willow, which was pretty much a perfect score, 10, so zero from 10. That's a very good species to have, there's a picture of it, you can kind of see there. And then also the wiregrass sedge, we found a lot of that, and I think on the next slide, you'll be able to see like the sedge meadows, but that was another good species we saw, even in some of this shrub car habitat, it was still present, so that's great to see. Uh, next slide. Uh, we also got the southern tamarack swamp, so this is more kind of dominated by obviously tamaracks typically. And then we also did have some, um, buckthorn, non-native in there, and then like the bogbirch sedgees, and then some of your more lowland species as well, understory. So that was some of those species. Obviously, tamarack still got a great C value high up, so these came back as between medium, high typically, so. Just some pictures kind of showing that habitat. Uh, next slide. And then sedge meadows, so these were kind of ones that were kind of good to see and kind of surprising to see to a degree, so. Kind of a wide range of stuff, obviously sedgees, um, the fenn, wiregrass sedge being the best one. It wasn't the only sedge present, there was also other types of sedgees, but to get down to like a species level of sedgees can be a lot of in-depth, so. Because this is just a FQA, we kind of just noted a lot of these areas as just being sedgees. If we saw like this wiregrass, we would kind of classify it separately, so it could have that higher C value, just because we know it's got a very high C value compared to just other sedgees, so. That's kind of part of that like FQA protocol. You kind of see like some of these special species that make up a good amount of the area, you kind of want to point them out, so you can kind of get that higher value in FQA too, so. And then a lot of other species present as well, so. Great to see out there. And next slide. And then this is kind of a graph kind of showing all those different community types, and then comparing it to the FQA, and then we kind of have like markers blocked off of like what's exceptional, what's high, medium, and low. So anything above like a seven FQA would be exceptional. There was a few for the sedge meadows being that. And then also I would just say that the diamonds are the averages of all the sites, and then the top and bottom of those bars are the min and max. And then there's also numbers below for each community types, that's how many sites were sampled for each of those types, so obviously like 12 sites for the sedge meadows were found, so. And then some other ones, there was only like one taken, because there was just not a lot of that habitat around, so we didn't need to go to as many of those, but. So you can kind of see, obviously, the rudal emergent marshes are definitely the lowest FQAs. The float and lead marsh was high, so was the sedge meadows, shrub car and swam- swamp tamarack were also pretty comparable in their FQA scores, so they were both pretty good wetland communities too. And then next slide. And then just to finish off, these are a couple little cool things I thought I found when, when we were out there and stuff, so. If you see on that left picture, the kind of glistening in the water, that's not technically like oil spill, because some people see that on like, in wetlands and stuff and think, oh, there's like oils like going through the wetlands. That's actually groundwater input, that's kind of like a reference that there's groundwater input coming in, and you'll usually see that shine kind of there. And then, um, one of us found the skunk cabbage flower out there, so that was kind of interesting to see. And then the other little guy is the caterpillar that I found out on one of the things, and that guy was about like three to four inches long, so it's a pretty big caterpillar, and that's actually like North America's largest moth in North America, so kind of cool to see something out there. They're not like rare or anything, but definitely still cool to see, so. That's about it. And then just contact information for myself and probably get to county.
Well, thank you so much, Colton. Does anyone have any questions, comments for Colton?
I have a question.
Yep.
Uh, so if you were to summarize the findings from all of this work, and you would say your biggest concern that we'd have to mitigate to kind of ward off, I give cattails, I'm hearing is a, we have a lot of them, at least in, was it Mud Lake?
Yeah, Mud Lake.
But what would you say the biggest concern is, and then what are the steps in order to try to bring up the score? Are, are there any plans for that, or would the D and, DNA work help us understand more species-related?
Yeah, um, the DNA work will help understand, obviously for like the FragMities and stuff, kind of seeing if there is hybridization kind of happening around the area. For the cattails, I really don't have a good answer of how to control those or make them go down in the population size and bring up the other species. It's kind of just doing good, um, practices around the area, I would say, start off with. Um, that's pretty much all I would see right now. I don't know if anyone else, if Erin had anything to say to that, but yeah, I don't have any answers really at the time. We'd have to kind of evaluate it more, but yeah.
I just wanted to share a couple thoughts. The, um, if, you know, any of us who've ever, if you've ever paddled or boated back in the South Marsh or biked along the bike trail, you kind of get a sense that this wetland areas has, you know, has some diversity.
That there's a lot of that, um, oh, I forgot which one it is, but it will, um, make your, scratch your arms and stuff, and is kind of like sensitive or poisonous, oh, the poison sumac.
Oh, poison sumac.
So there's a lot of that to walk through and stuff, so if you were to walk through that, I would definitely highly recommend wearing long sleeves and stuff and.
Yeah, let's get a map of where that is and avoid that area, because that's not fun.
And it does get wet, obviously, wetlands you're walking through, so we're wearing waders typically, chest waders, the waist waders, walking through there as well, so, yeah. Lot of fun work.
And I know that, you know, the city, um, invested in the, the survey works to help, you know, so that in, as DNR is evaluating our request, they can, you know, get a, a sense of inundation and how that will help, so that's a conversation for another day, but I'm, I'm just really, um, so grateful to your office, Colton, and you in particular for doing this work and, you know, investing that time last summer, because I think it's just, we learned so much more about the resources that we have there and even some things that we want to, you know, take some action on to try, like the FragMities that we wouldn't have known about without this study. So I'm just really grateful to your office for taking this on last year.
Yeah, and I was just happy to kind of take that on, because, I mean, take good, take opportunity of like a bad situation, learn from the area, there wasn't much done before, there was only like one site up by the glacial trail that was done back in 2017 by the DNR, otherwise, most of the other area hasn't really been kind of studied like this. So it's good data to have possibility of going out in the future and like reassessing it, and you can kind of see the changes over time and stuff, so it's good data to have good baseline.
Absolutely. Um, and I wanted, again, just to acknowledge your early slides, um, and all the other, you know, sort of ongoing, um, cyclical studies and, and annual work that, um, your office does that really benefits our community and, and benefits the lake, so thank you for all of that. And, um, I know, um, you regularly attend the Joint Rock Lake Committee, so I appreciate the support that you're giving, um, to that committee, and, um, maybe we should have them come back once a year or something, I don't know, just like whatever. It's always great to see what, what new we're learning about Rock Lake and how we can, you know, in our roles, work to protect it.
Yeah, always happy to kind of give updates on information and stuff, so, yeah.
Great, thank you. Anybody else need comments, questions? Okay, thanks again, Colton.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution 25-09, which is an amendment to the police union contract. Um, Sam, could you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-09, authorizing the city manager to execute, execute a memorandum of understanding amending the wage schedule established in Article 6 of the agreement between the City of Lake Mills, Police, City of Lake Mills Police Department and the Lake Mills Professional Police Association.
Thank you. Uh, why don't we hear from Chief Schroeder on this first before we go to a motion?
Sure, so there are a couple things in your meeting packet. One is a letter that I drafted to Drake Daly that I believe he shared with you, um, as well as some salary comparisons that I put together, um, for a number of agencies, 15 of them besides our own, um, from in and right around Jefferson County. Um, the impetus for this i- in short terms is a market adjustment to bring us within market of what officers are making at agencies in this area and around us, um, in particular the ones that I am competing against to hire officers and to retain the officers that we have. So I approached Drake, uh, requesting this market adjustment. Um, he has done market adjustments for many employees throughout the city. Um, obviously with the, the police union being the only union in the city, they have a contract that has to be, um, approved by the city council, and that's why this comes before, uh, the council tonight with the request to authorize him, um, to enter into a memorandum of understanding, changing the wage scale in the current contract. Our current contract covers from 2024 through 2026, so we're in year two of it. Um, it does provide some raises, but even with those raises, um, we do not compete in the market as far as wages for police officers. So I am happy to answer specific questions that you have, or I can, um, talk further about it.
Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask?
Greg? So as far as, um, the contract we have in place, we probably put that in place thinking it would be competitive. I'm, I'm guessing other communities did the same and we just saw a rise in the compensation?
We, yeah, we have seen, I think, an unprecedented rise in contracts that have been approved, both around the time that ours was and since our contract was approved. Um, I think our contracts certainly provided wage increases that were unprecedented for our police department here in, in Lake Mills as well. Um, but in looking at the numbers and what it has done as compared to the other agencies, um, we're not gaining ground and we're, we're really not even maintaining ground with the raises that we gave, uh, compared to some that have given more significant increases and we're already well ahead in wages from where we had been. Um, historically, we've been well behind, um, agencies in this area, and the contract, although intended to help catch up, unfortunately with others passing contracts of similar or even bigger sizes, uh, didn't accomplish that.
And this adjustment is, um, not just, it's not a one-year, it's, it basically raises the bar moving forward.
Correct. The adjustment would be to the wage scale as a whole, and generally in these contracts, the wage scale is then adjusted year after year, depending on what percentage is agreed to in the contract, so it is a, it is a permanent raise, for lack of a better term.
Okay, thank you.
So with the documents that we have in our packet, there is a memorandum of understanding which lays out the, um, the new starting rate and the new, the new wages, and then our, the resolution, the prepared resolution for us to vote on would authorize the city manager to sign that memorandum of understanding, so that would be updating the contract to, um, increase those wages.
Correct. It would essentially replace the existing wage scale with the one that's in this memorandum of, of understanding, and then that new wage scale would be the basis for any future negotiations for future contracts. Um, one other thing to note in here is, um, there was significant pay compression between our police officer rate and our sergeant rate, although we currently don't have sergeants, my intention in the very near future is to promote sergeants, to replace a lieutenant position that is vacant. Um, the salary for those sergeants will primarily come from what the lieutenant salary was already budgeted, um, but this raise does apply to that sergeant rate because there is part of this union as well.
Thank you for clarifying that, because there is, there is a sergeant line there, and as you said, we don't have one now, but it, it allows for that in the future. Um, and I, what you just said made me think of a question, um, you mentioned budget, so, um, does this, um, approving this memorandum of, of understanding, are you able to accommodate these changes within your, the current budget for 2025 that we've already adopted?
They can be. Um, currently in the 2025 budget, we have excess funds that were budgeted for healthcare, health insurance, as well as HSA contributions. Um, with a significant change to our healthcare plan, there are some significant savings written in, not written into the budget, but resulting from that, that exist. Um, so it would use up about half of the savings that were realized by switching, switching the healthcare plan, um, and then obviously would eat that amount up going forward year after year.
Any other questions or comments on Resolution 25-09 or the attached documents? Steve, I haven't been looking over your way, so any questions or comments?
No, not at the moment, thank you.
I don't recall, did we have a?
No, we need a motion.
Did we have a reading of the?
We did have the, we did have the title was read, yeah, so we just need a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve City Council Resolution 25-09.
Second.
Second.
Oh, I think Mary beat you, Steve, so we have a motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Ms. Schmager. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 25-09, which is an amendment to the police union contract? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, our next two items, we've got some public works staff, um, here that will help us with these, so our next item is Rev- Resolution 25-10, uh, regarding Milton Street and Linden Street. Um, Sam, would you read that resolution title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-10, approving the 2025 Milton Street reconstruction in the Linden Street utility construction plan.
Thank you. Um, does anyone want to make a motion, or do we want to hear from staff first? Okay, I guess we want to hear from staff, so we'll let, um, Matt get settled and then he can, um, get started. So we have Matt Hasslett, uh, with our City Engineer Strand, and then our Public Works Director, Randy Myram, so thank you gentlemen for being here. And Matt, I think you have a, a presentation, right?
Yes, I have a short presentation, and then we can get into some discussion.
Great.
Dave, can you pull up the Milton Street presentation, please?
Want the same from the public works?
Yeah.
And what was it?
Milton Street.
What's it, the street?
Milton Street, Linden Street reconstruction.
Okay, give me a second.
As he's pulling that up, um, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to talk about Milton Street and Linden Street. I have presented in the past on our street projects, just a refresher, uh, my name is Matt Hasslett, with Strand Associates, I've been with Strand for almost eight years, um, specifically working with the city the last six, um, six years, variety of different projects and, and helping with, um, you know, any tasks that, that the city staff may have, um, you know, have help for. I will be the project manager on this project as I was the previous number of years, um, the Brookstone, Collie Street, Oak Street, Commons Park, um, they're starting to add up a little bit, which is good. Um, so we will get into Milton Street, I will, I'll run through this, and then if you guys have questions during, that's fine, um, or questions after, maybe I'll answer some as I go, um, but we'll get started here. So Milton Street, uh, project limits are from South Ferry Drive to South Main Street. We're going to go a little bit into the intersection of Ferry Drive, but not the entire, um, width, um, to the west side of Ferry, it'll just be to the center line of Ferry Drive. On Mil- on, um, Main Street, we'll go right to that concrete, there's a, a concrete kind of overlay where the asphalt meets from the 89 project back in 2017, 2019. Um, so that's the project limits for Milton Street. Next slide, uh, project limits for Linden Street, this was added on a little more recently with the annexation, and we're going to go, um, the slide says 250 feet, but it's, it's more like 200 feet north from West Pine Street. Um, we don't plan on going into Pine Street at all, it's just from the sidewalk to the north, um, with utility extension only. We don't plan on going into Pine Street at all, it's just from sidewalk to the north with utility extension only. Only water and sewer. And then stubbing out services for future connections. That may happen, but primarily for that resident. That was annexed. Next slide. So the anticipated project schedule. Bit opening scheduled from March 20th. There will be advertisement. The two weeks prior to that, along with one week prior. Spring of 25 construction, as you guys are are well aware. What we're going to do is have. A range of options like we've done in the past where the contractor can start the project. Kind of give them a time, a wide timeframe to start, but we are having in the contract that. As soon as the contractor starts, they have 10 weeks to complete. We started this a couple of years ago to help with. The potential for a contractor to leave and then. You know, there's not much going on in in, you know, having residents upset with with the project, you know, it's just better to, once you're there, have it completed. A few notes I wrote down here before that are not on that slide. I'm going to have the subs- the substantial completion, which is the intended use of the project, which would mean. One layer of asphalt at least. Before the school starts, before the school season or school year starts, excuse me. I was looking at the calendar, I cannot find Lake. The high school, the Lake Mills High School, but I did find Lakeside Lutheran. So I have August 22nd as that Friday. I will double check that and make sure, but before that Monday or Tuesday of starting, we'll have substantial completion with final completion. I have three weeks after that, but before the Milton Street block party.
There's there's probably a good chance that the kids won't start until after Labor Day.
Okay.
But teachers will.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Well, I will. I'll probably leave it as either probably end of August is when it'll, I'll have a substantial completion in there, whether that's the third or fourth week of August.
And there is some school traffic on that street.
Yeah.
One note with the.
I can see the police chief nod.
One note with the schedule, we did have a PIM. That was back in, I think, November. Next slide. Quickly here, the the drawings are in your packet and full reconstruct, water sewer notably. We're not adding storm sewer, this is due to having a natural high point on Milton Street and having it a relatively short stretch, there is not a need. For additional storm sewer there, the storm sewer can go to the east, to the west, there are inlets on both sides to catch that that storm water. So just kind of a note as you're kind of looking through here. Our drawings do show our tree protection zones. We have a staging plan that I will kind of touch on. After the slide, but. We're kind of noting, making it loud and clear to the contractor where. There'll be fencing, well, there'll be tree protection and. Obviously continued discussions during the project at the pre-construction meeting with. What our expectations are during this project.
Can I ask a question since you mentioned the trees, how many trees are going to have to be removed? I think it's important to have a fact at the public information meeting because there's already rumor mills that. Trees have a number been taken down and there's going to be a large number that are already down and. I took a walk, I didn't see that there had been any tree removal, but I I think just having a fact about how many will be removed would be helpful for the public.
Sure, I don't know if you want to answer that, yeah.
Four.
Sorry. Yeah, we have four marked for removal.
Okay.
These were marked by the arborist, Eric, well, the parks department. So.
Good to note, because the number that was the rumor mill is much, much larger than that, and so I think having a fact, so I'm saying is having a fact. Facts are important and communicating the facts, I think, is just given the sensitivity. To the construction and tree combination at at this time, I think it would be helpful, that's why I'm asking, so thank you.
Yeah, so there are no trees. And Eric, you can maybe piggyback off of this. There are no trees that will be removed due to design of this project. There were a few trees that Eric and his staff noted for removal. And I believe they were, you know, either dead or dying or diseased that that he noted, but I'll maybe let Eric speak on that briefly.
Yeah, I can talk to that. Any trees that were removed were previously noted for removal. Not due to this project, but due to, like Matt stated, dead, diseased or dying, and they were already removed prior to the actual written process.
Just out of cur- and I'm looking at your map trying to make all the sense of it, the tree, sorry, tree. Sorry, looking for the actual words, protection, tree protection zone. How is that being like, how is that being taken into consideration with the construction of the road?
Is that a question for me or for Matt?
Either one.
Yeah, so the, these were.
Oh, if you want to go ahead, Matt.
These are based off from the ad hoc tree policy. That wasn't passed, but it was, you know, it's it's a pilot program for for this project, and as you guys know, this is the first year with it, so. The the way that it's going to lay out is, and I'll get into altern- alternates, you know, because we have alternates in this project. Depending on, you know, that way we can quantify and qual-, you know, get a price for what each of these items may cost during construction, but. In the general scheme, there'll be a a snow fence around these tree protection zones, these tree protection zones were surveyed. From Eric and his staff provided to Strand to get the radius of the tree. And and the zone of the of the limit, so basically what I did was I took that information and. Drew on these radiuses of where each tree zone is. That dictated the boundary of the tree protection zone and. Yeah, and then a note behind the sidewalk in in private property, you do you do notice maybe some of the zones go back into private property. We're going to have a fence at the property line, so that excavation cannot happen within that tree zone behind the right of way. So does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of lines and things on this, so it's like trying to figure out where what everything means, but yes.
What I can clarify as well is tree protection zones are designated by a multiplication factor. So you measure the trunk diameter based on the DBH, the DBH's diameter, breast height. There's also a multiplication factor that takes into consideration the species tolerance class, so different trees have different. Levels of tolerance based on construction or soil disturb disturbance that goes around them. And the next thing we do is we actually take anywhere from multiplication factors of six to eight. All based on ISA requirements, ISA meaning International Society of Foreculture. And in determining those radiuses is what actually you're taking all those multiplication factors into account. Is what determines tree protection zone radius for each tree. So all of those trees on Milton Street were calculated, were diagnosed, were measured based on those requirements from ISA requirements.
Thank you for both of you. I have one more follow up on that, well, maybe two. Eric, I I'm not sure if I heard you clearly, you said that there were four trees that were identified for removal, but not due to this project. Did you say that those have already been removed?
There have been three trees that have been removed for. You know, dead, diseased or dying requirements, and that was on Anderson 158, 135 and 143. There should not be any more that would be required for removal of this project.
Okay, and then I have a follow up question because, and I I know you'll be talking more about this in a moment, Matt, but. We're, you know, this is our first case where we're evaluating the tree proposed tree production policy and how that would. You know, what kind of bids we would get and what the costs would be with the policy in place or without the policy. And so I'm wondering if. If we did not apply to the policy to this project, would some additional trees be re- be called for to be removed? Or would it be the same? With or without the policy in terms of tree removal for this project?
We always look at. Saving trees when we can, you know, obviously we want to save the trees that that are out there. In this particular project, there's not a lot of grade changing going on. You know, relative, the road is relatively staying the same horizontal slope and everything, so in this particular project. There would be, no, the the trees would be be able to be saved. The counter to that would be where there are laterals, water services and sanitary services that are currently running kind of directly under a tree. And in that case, we would be looking at options during design and during construction to see what we can do. You know, obviously not going to just dig, you know, try not to dig through a root ball to to get that. So there there are item, you know, actions that we can we can do to help save that that tree.
Okay, thanks.
We will also be including a full time arborist with this project, so.
Yeah, and and kind of piggybacking off that. I'm in contact with a registered arborist in Madison that Strand has worked with in the past on their. Our Madison Metro Sewer District projects in in Madison, so I I'm currently working corresponding with with them, I do not have a number yet. They will be a sub consultant to Strand, so Strand will hire them. And it would be a coordination effort between us and the arborist for when to come out. You know, on an as needed basis during construction. You know, tomorrow, we're going to be getting close to the tree, you know, can you come out and and help us identify what we need to do? Based off of the of the requirements in the tree protection policy specifications that are included in our specs. So tho- that exact language will be an addendum in our specifications.
Okay, okay, thanks. And I know you probably were, we're probably anticipating some of your slides, so sorry.
It's totally okay, no, it's it's great.
Disrupting your flow there.
No, you're.
Any other questions right now from council? All right, why don't you go ahead, Matt?
We'll go to the next slide, I think the next slide just shows the east side of Milton Street. We've already kind of talked about what where the limits are for this. The slide after shows Linden Street, oh, I'm sorry, staging, so. The staging plan kind of came about because. Of the tree protection policy that are that are encroaching into the roadway. We need to. Have a have a road that, you know, is obviously constructed well and engineered to. To our best practice, right, so we do need to have, do work within a tree protection zone in the roadway. But what we're we're trying to get at here with the staging plan is limiting or negating any basically storage or parking of materials or equipment. Within that tree protection zone, now during construction, yes, it may, we may be going through there with with either road building or some curb and gutter, but. The general idea is that there's not going to be an equipment parked there for. Couple days or, you know, hypothetically, there there won't be an equipment or material stored. In a location to to cause some weight settlement on a potential root of a tree. So that's what the staging plan is, that will be included in the drawings as well.
May I have a question, if you could go back to that slide on. The the top. Image, kind of just slightly left of center on the south side of the street, there's a, the sidewalk takes a jog. And it looks like it's a little different jog than the current sidewalk, and I was just curious, I guess why? And I don't know if that's to avoid a tree that's on the private property or what?
Yeah, so there there's a tree in that it's right on the private line, you know, it's right on the on the property line there, it's maybe it's a little bit hard to see.
I can see the little image.
But that that was, instead of continuing the sidewalk, we would be damaging that that tree substantially. So the idea for that is to to bump the sidewalk in to avoid the other two tree protection areas as well. To fit that sidewalk.
So the sidewalk, the current sidewalk already has a bit of a jog in it, but this would be a little bit different.
Yeah, and and during construction, if if we want to, we can keep the same route with with how the the existing sidewalk is. Now, if the existing sidewalk's a little bit, I want to say steeper, you know, sharp, we can help kind of flatten that out a little bit. All depending on where the roots are of that of that private tree, really.
One thing, one thing on that particular scenario, that's a great observation, because I was thinking from a different perspective, I happen to be a citizen who has a very. Who has this situation and the snow on the snowplow piles right onto the sidewalk. All winter long, and so there's a con depending on the width of this from a citizen perspective that I I'm hoping that is being taken into consideration. Because we had, they, I think when they put the sidewalk in, in my home, they went around the private tree, so I have a very narrow. Little strip of grass on a good portion of the yard, and so the sidewalk is very challenging to keep clean. Just a side note.
No, absolutely, it's a good, good observation, you know, we. Pros and cons, we're trying to.
Yeah.
Get that happy medium, right?
It's just, it's, I mean, it's something just for for discussion and consideration, just a perspective from a.
Yeah.
Person who actually has this scenario.
Yeah, and we're, we're really just trying to follow the the tree ad hoc policy as best as closely as we can, so that's. Kind of why you see that deviation now, touching on sidewalk a little bit. It's in a few different slides, but later slides, we can talk about it now. In the past, we've done like a spot replace sidewalk, there's some good sidewalk sections on Milton Street in particular that. We, you know, can deem that we may not need to to even touch, remove if they're in, if they're in good condition. The kind of that, then not all the sidewalk is new, but it may help save, you know, some cost to to the overall project. We did that on College Street as well and on Oak Street, so. Next slide, Dave. Linden Street, as I said, was a, an add on. Well, we were kind of monitoring it and then it got included in this contract. As I mentioned, it's a little over 200 feet to the north to to serve. The property that was annexed in, wh- while we're doing. The mains going going to the north, the water and the sanitary sewer main. We're going to stub in future water and sewer services, it would be. Not the best practice to not do that right now. So we are going to stub those out for the future to the property line. And include. You might, you may see on the on the west side there, we have a. Well, I'll back up, there, a lot of the water from the cemetery comes down. Flowing across Linden Street currently today. And we are, in our drawings, we have what's called a screed curb getting put in on that east side, that downstream side, so it's an asphalt wedge. In essence, to catch some of that water before it gets to that downstream, that east property, so we'll catch some of that water and bring it. Down to Pine Street so that it can get in the curb and gutter. So that's kind of what you're, what you're seeing there with that sidewalk flume. It's a little tricky area, but we're proposing a sidewalk flume to send, to bring that water below the sidewalk. There is a sidewalk flume over by Lakeside Lutheran, if you guys recall or have ever seen it. Water goes underneath the sidewalk, it's on like a solid grade, so the sidewalk grade is the same, but underneath in that area, it's just concrete and the water is able to get underneath it, so. That's what we're proposing in this area, instead of the additional cost for storm sewer and having to go into Pine Street with with a storm sewer tap and and that.
And a quick question, then, Linden Street is is narrow or doesn't have curb and gutter and that would remain, is that correct?
Correct, Linden Street is going to be built as. Linden Street is going to be built as-is. It won't be built to city standard. It's going to just, it's basically, it's a, it's a utility replacement project is what, what it is.
Not really a street reconstruction.
Correct, correct, yep. Next slide, Dave. Uh, we touched on the tree protection policy a little bit, um, but I'll kind of go into it a little bit more here in detail. With the ad hoc tree protection policy, you know, being a pilot program and direction from the council, we are going to have alternate deducts, um, built into the bid items. So the tree protection policy will be included in the original bid, right? The base bid. But all these, um, different elements, you know, tree protection fencing or a root cutting requirement, hand form curb are going to be a separate line item. And to help us kind of quantify how much that, that may cost. Now, I hold preference, it's a, during the cost, you know, after these slides, it is a, a best judgment call on, it's hard to kind of know what we may see from, from a cost perspective. But this, you know, during bid, during bidding, we will then know exactly what, you know, the cost of the, uh, tree protection policy items will be on this project. One note on that last, um, bullet there, liquidated damages. There's a little, um, section, a couple page section in the specifications of the addendum for the tree protection policy, kind of breaking out liquidated damages. So it could be, you know, scraping bark, it could be nicking a root when not approved or, or some, you know, taking a branch down or something like that. So all these liquidated damages are laid out, um, that the city then can enforce during construction. Next slide. Uh, we already kind of touched on the sidewalk. These two photos are, are, um, basically examples of, of, you know, good sidewalk, fair sidewalk that, um, may be able to, to be saved. Uh, the following slide, Dave is showing some sidewalk that, uh, would be candid to, to get replaced because we would not want to keep, um, cracked and heaved sidewalk on a new project. Next slide, um, goes through a little bit of the cost. This, the cost of full replacement, you know, 64,000. Spot replacement, what I did was just approximate a third could be saved. So that, that's kind of where that, that 43,000 number came from. I most likely will have about a third in here. The spot replace unit price versus full replacement unit price won't change a whole lot, just because of the nature of this project. Everything will be kind of pulled out, everything will be hand formed, there won't be any machine pouring going on, um, everything will be hand, hand form, hand poured. So there's not much of a difference between replacing all of it or some sections of sidewalk. Next slide. No, but I can keep talking. Um, one other aspect of, I'm going to go back to Milton Street, is the underground electric in Milton Street. And Randy, you can, um, jump in here whenever. Um, Strand has been working with city staff for designing, um, underground or having different options of, of new electric on Milton Street. The option that was decided was to go fully underground from the east side of Main Street, under Main, and then full underground all the way to Ferry Drive. There are two existing poles that will remain in place to serve overhead, um, services. The remaining, I believe, are going to be all underground services. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The way the contract is, is going to be written and in the bid items is the, we're only going to look for bids to bore the conduit and to pull conduit. The city staff, um, Randy's staff will be able to do, uh, the remaining work for the electric. Overall cost with
Matt?
Yep.
Those two poles that will remain, those are to hook up to the houses, is that what that's for?
Yeah, so those will be for the services.
Yeah, like, oh, yep, overhead.
So the lines will be coming up the pole this time instead of going down.
Right.
Um, overall cost, I broke out cost in two different ways. Um, one with the full tree protection, the, our base bid, um, that comes out to 1.13 million. That includes the electrical and includes Linden Street. With the deductions of the tree protection policy, um, that comes to 1,028,000 for a difference of 102,000 within it. That's our, our probable cost, right? That's our opinion of what, what the cost may be. Like I said, it, it may be, it may differ, um, but that's our opinion of, of cost right now. That, those numbers are below, um, budgeted numbers still. So we are within our budget numbers. Then we'll, obviously we'll see, um, at bidding what, what comes of that. So can have more of a discussion? Questions?
Uh, Matt, I've got a couple of questions about the, uh, opinion of probable cost. Um, and, and you kind of just touched on that a little bit. And I know I listened to the Public Works Board meeting. I know this was discussed a little bit as well. So I think you said the opinion of probable cost is just an estimate. You know, we know it might not be exact, but, um, with the proposed tree protection policy, it would be $102,000 more. Um, when I look at your, the breakdown of the different aspects of the project, it looks like all of that is just on the Milton Street project side. Obviously it doesn't apply to the electrical, it doesn't apply to the Linden Street. So it takes the Milton Street project from 760, 760,000 something to 862,000. So it's, right, so it's just on the Milton Street. So if my math is right, that's like 13%. So I just want us all to be thinking about that because this is why we, you know, asked for this, I think, to really understand. There's a lot of great, um, uh, aspects to the tree protection policy, but the one thing that we didn't really have a good understanding of is, you know, how does that play out in terms of the costs of a project? So, um, and from what you described and what Eric was describing too, the nature of this street and the lack of needing to change grade and other things like that, there's not, um, not going to be much needed is, or, you know, required as far as tree removal where there might be on other projects. But so what, that, that, that's, I just think that's something I really want to keep in mind. So that's, you know, 13% higher cost to do the tree protection zone. One thing, um, you talked about earlier, and I was, I, I don't see any numbers for this, but, um, in the tree protection policy, we have things that, there are things that the contractor is expected to do, but then there's also things that the city is expected to do, including having that arborist like you talked about. So do we know how much more that will cost, you know, to have an arborist doing the oversight?
Not at, not today, I don't. But as I kind of touched on, I'm, I'm working with them. I've sent them the specifications and, you know, the drawings and working on, um, getting a cost for that. And as soon as I do, I will share it with, with the staff and with the council. Cause you're correct, that 13% becomes a little higher with
Would become a little higher with then also the, the cost of an arborist. And I, and my understanding is we don't have the capacity in-house to do that. You know, our, our arborists are fully prescribed with, you know, the work that they already do. So we would have to bring in, you know, a consulting arborist in order to provide that oversight. So I just, I just want to make sure we all are understanding, um, what the, the costs of the tree protection policy are and, and make sure that we're factoring that into, you know, what we decide, what we decide to do.
Not to counter you, but my math is 9%.
9%?
Yeah.
Open your mic, it's off.
Sorry. My math is 9%.
Well, I did 102 divided by 765. That's how I got 13%. So it increased it by 13%, but.
I guess I'm looking at the total cost of the project.
Yeah, which included Ly, Linden and the electric aspect of it. She's focusing just on the tree zones on Milton.
Cause the tree zone policy only changed one line of the overall, yeah. So, yeah, you could, you could look at it both ways, but, um. Okay, any other, um, questions or comments? I guess then one other thing maybe we should clarify. So, um, a vote for this resolution tonight allows this to go out to bid. And then when we get those bids back, that's when we will be making a decision whether to apply the tree protection policy
Whether to award.
To this project.
It'd be a whether to award the project.
Award the project with these requirements in place.
With application of any deductions that you choose, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, um, so we don't have a motion yet, would, are there any other questions or would someone like to make a motion on Resolution 25-10?
I'll move to approve City Council Resolution 25-10 approving 2025 Milton Street Reconstruction and Linden Street Utility Construction Plan.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Quinno, seconded by Mr. Waters. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call vote on Resolution 25-10, which is the Milton and Linden Street Reconstruction Bid Package?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Mager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, thank you very much, Matt. Okay, our last item under council business is Resolution 25-11, which is our annual street and sidewalk maintenance. Sam, would you read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 25-11, approving the 2025 Street and Sidewalk Maintenance Plan.
Thank you. So let's go to staff on this one as well. And I see we have Dwayne online, who is This is your baby, right? This maintenance? So glad you could join us.
Thank you, council, for, for having me. Um, it has been a 10-year process, um, and we'll touch on that a little bit. Um, maybe before I begin, would you like a shorter version of the plan since you've all heard the process in the past? I do want to highlight a couple of new things, uh, that were created for tonight's meeting, uh, but maybe a little feedback from you on how you would like me to present tonight? Short version, long version, or a little of both?
Michelle, what'd you say?
I said short version.
I think, I'm getting a sense, short.
I've already heard it in Public Works.
And I watched a Public Works meeting as well, so, okay.
Collect questions, make it long.
There we go, yeah, right. We'll ask questions and then we'll figure out, we maybe should have gone long, but.
All right, so I'm going to try to do short, but before I start, I want to do a little shout out. Um, there is a presentation in the packet, uh, that we did present at Public Works and it's really the packet we've done for years. But I want to highlight, uh, some staff member, uh, that has helped out, Sean from our GIS department, has been working on, uh, some new, uh, products for future meetings. And we're going to highlight a little storyboard that he put together. And so hopefully this works, um, testing it out remotely. And, uh, hopefully we can buzz through the presentation and kind of show you some new, uh, information that he provided for us. So hold one second, I will share my screen. And can everyone see that?
Yes.
Slide, it should say 2025?
Yes.
Yes, you got it.
All right, so, uh, cover page, you'll notice that most of this is exactly like the other presentation. Um, this slide talks about where our whistle lengths are in 2025, uh, that we have 35 miles of streets or almost 36 miles of streets that we maintain minus some of the county roads. Um, so staff is required to maintain almost 34 miles, uh, of streets, uh, in it, in any given year. This slide, how quickly, that's our Pacer ratings, you know, the, the system, 1 through 10 rating, 10 being really good, uh, 1 being falling apart and we're probably reconstructing. Uh, this was the impetus of this whole program that started in, uh, with public works meetings and work sessions back in 2015. Really showed how to try and, uh, project a 60-year life cycle with pavement analysis. Um, and what really created some of that seven-year plan, uh, plan that we, we do for street ma, asphalt street maintenance. Uh, some of the criteria that's, uh, been talked about over the years, it's rated 5 through 8. Well, first off, we won't touch a street basically other than maybe crack filling, unless it's hitting that seven-year cycle. Um, there's always exceptions to the rule, of course. Typically after that seven years, we're either making a decision, if the rating's in the 5 through 8, we're probably looking at a chip seal. If it's 3 to 5, we're doing a mill and overlay. If it's 2 to 4, maybe we're doing a pulverization or because of utility, uh, infrastructure, uh, analysis, we may be letting that crop fall to a reconstruction at a 1 through 3. The goal is that after several cycles of chip seals every seven year, uh, we're looking at a mill and overlay. Um, and so typically if you have a brand-new seat, street, let's say the new street that was built in Brookstone, the goal is, is that we're not milling overlaying until year 21 or year 28, and we're prolonging that life, uh, hopefully then double that time, uh, to get to a new reconstruction 60 years from the initial construction. Um, street maintenance in 25, uh, again, in order to maintain progress, we got to do about 14% of the streets every year, um, or 4.8 miles, um, or 91,000 square yards. Um, this year's candidate may map, meaning what are roads that are eligible because we have done work seven or eight years ago, or seven or eight years ago that have not been touched? Um, we have actually candidates of over 10 miles of streets. The candidate list is much higher, if you recall, and we'll get to a slide a little later, that, uh, there was a big bulk in 27 and 2018, kind of a, driven through the start of this process in 15 and 16, which said we needed to catch up and we were falling behind. So budget, as you'll see, was very high in 17 and 18. And so now we're feeling that, that lag because we're falling behind because of our budget, um, isn't jumping up to 1.3 million to cover it. Uh, and we'll talk a little bit about that budget in the, in the future. Uh, 2025, uh, we're currently proposing 2.1 miles or 126,000 of chip seal. You'll notice that that's, you know, generally in the $3 range, uh, per square yard. Uh, mill and overlay of several streets for about a half a mile for 196. And then as Matt has just talked about, the reconstruction of Milton Street, um, is .17 miles for 438,000. So you can kind of see the difference in cost. So the more we can catch with the chip seal and the mill and overlay, the dollars go a lot further as far as mileage. Um, so the total one-year street activities proposed is 2.8 miles for 760,000. And unfortunately, that's at an approximate 12-year maintenance pace. And some of that has to do with the fact that we're doing a little bit more mill and overlay this year. And, um, you know, maybe inflation is affecting the budget that we've been running at 350,000, 15,000 over a number of about five years. So there's a number of issues that are, that are affecting that. But be aware that we're running under, or we're losing pace with that seven-year program. Next slide, okay, so now we're going to get into some of the new ones that, uh, were being requested in previous years and then even last week at the Public Works Board meeting, which is more information on, uh, some of the data. So Sean put this together. This is a, from our GIS, it tracks every street in the GIS. We can zoom in, um, it is, each street is rated, uh, color rated, uh, based on the ratings. And then on the right-hand side of the slide, he is showing, uh, percentages. In this case, it's percentage of based on linear length of streets. Um, and you can see that, you know, many of our streets, uh, you know, from 6 through 10, we're looking just generally glancing at that, you know, over 70 or 80% of the streets are in that good to better to best situation. And so, uh, just a little tool that maybe in the future we'll be able to use a little bit more. Sean's not ready to make it public yet, uh, but, um, some tools that we're, we're starting to be capable of doing. Um, the next one is a little, uh, The next one is a little, a very nice slide, kind of drives home the question of how how well has this program been working? And so what he's provided for me is a little tool that slides between two thousand sixteen and two thousand fifteen. You recall, the darker the color, the more severe case of the rating, the higher brighter color is a better rating. So we're now looking at two thousand sixteen. We switch that to a much higher brighter color for twenty twenty five. It really kind of pops out at you to show that this program is being effective and we're minimizing the amount of poor streets throughout the city. Another slide, just kind of driving home that two thousand sixteen versus two thousand twenty five and how that color, you can notice those brighter colors are showing up on that that pie chart. Next slide is our candidate map for this year. You'll note that this is that ten years, ten miles worth of roads. The key here on this slide is the two thousand eighteen are in blue, the two thousand seventeen are in red, meaning we are getting into streets that are now eight, seven and eight years old since we've last done a maintenance program to them. From that slide, staff has reduced to a proposed plan for twenty twenty five, green being chip seal, red being mill and overlay. You'll know probably the key one is is Madison Street for mill and overlay, and that is taking into account some of the LSLs that occurred after the last maintenance. And some of those, if you've driven it lately, that isn't a real smooth part of Madison Street. So our goal is to try and mill and overlay, maybe do some patching and some over patching on some of those patches for the LSLs and and mill and overlay those portions where the LSLs have been replaced. In areas where the LSLs have not been replaced on Madison Street, we will look to do a chip seal with the anticipation that at some point in the future, there likely will be some type of trench if the property owner decides to replace their lead service line. And just to re just to refresh, the DNR recommends that we don't do partial replacements. And so we're a little bit at the mercy at times to each of the property owners. So I think Randy is looking to maybe reach out to some of these property owners and see if they would like to replace this year. If so, we may look to do more mill and overlay on portions of Madison Street. Next slide is just a showing again, just kind of showing where the sidewalk is proposed. This takes into account or the listing takes into account, of course, complaints that have come into the director of public works or into the public works department and the remainder of the list that didn't get finished as of the end of last year. The final slide kind of talks about the final couple of slides talks about the budget and the history on the left hand side. You can see that seventeen and eighteen year where you can see in earnest, this program was implemented and then was backed off from a little bit. And then now in the last five or six years have been about three hundred thousand dollars. Now note, it hasn't been increasing for inflation, so maybe there's some argument that it could increase some, but really the bulk of this is facing that that slug in seventeen and eighteen, if that makes sense. The right hand side of the slide talks about how we typically budget this, three hundred and fifteen thousand, and then an additional fifteen thousand in special assessment, thirty thousand of it for sidewalk and three hundred thousand for for the street maintenance. So summary for twenty five and what is being proposed tonight. There is a butter's a reserve from previous years of three hundred and ninety two thousand dollars that has been carried over. A bulk of that, of course, was in last year, if you recall, when we presented this, we were looking at the three hundred thousand dollars. There were some things that happened throughout the year. We had a retirement, we had our retirement, some staff members that have left. We had the county chose not to do the chip seal, so we went out to bid. And if you recall in June, when we discussed the chip seal, we reduced the program substantially in twenty four. So there was a carryover of about a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars from twenty four into twenty five. Another reason why there's a little bit of lag in catching up in the program. So what staff Drake, Sam, myself and Randy discussed was to propose to not bond for new dollars or borrowing in twenty five for street maintenance, but to rather to look to use something under the three ninety two budget reserve, using the three hundred and fifteen thousand that is the budget that was passed and trying to hit a happy median in between that three ninety two and the three fifteen. So the current plan, as it's presented, is three hundred and twenty two thousand for street maintenance plus the fifteen thousand for sidewalk repairs, is a three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar opinion of cost. Again, we're we're hitting in between that three fifteen and the three ninety two. Hope that was a short presentation, I'll open it up to questions.
Are there any questions for Dwayne or Randy? Mary?
Well, I was actually pointing. She can start first.
I was, no, I don't have a I don't have a question. I just want to echo what you were saying, Dwayne, about the the really cool tool that Sean made, and I Sean, it was Sean, right?
It was.
Sean.
So it's it's that was quite impressive, just I know it's for him, it's probably not not difficult to put together, but for somebody like me, I really like having that visual. And, you know, if there's any way you can share that presentation that has that tool, I would like to play with it if it's possible.
We started having that discussion. He was, I want to give a shout out, I have and I will continue to shout out. It's been a good progress from when we first started doing this presentation. And obviously, we'll talk with Randy and Sean to see if there's ways that we can provide this tool maybe on the website at some point in the future.
Sounds good, thanks.
Mary? Okay, I'll start with my sidewalk question first. There had been, I think, brought to staff's attention, a sidewalk that was removed on five fourteen West Lake Street. And I'm not sure where that stands. I didn't see it in the sidewalk plan or the map, and it's a it was there was a sidewalk and now the sidewalk is missing. And I don't know if it was might have been as a result of some construction that this homeowner had been completing completed, but I was just curious if it was going to be addressed in this plan or if it's somewhere else.
You say there's a void somewhere without sidewalk panels?
The sidewalk is removed on five fourteen West Lake Street. It was brought forward from the Parks Board. It was brought forward there, and I I believe Eric was bringing it forward to, I don't know if it was you, Randy, or to Dwayne.
Eric did bring it to my attention. We did talk about it.
Okay.
I believe this is the last property against the lake on Lake Street?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, so I'm trying to remember which year, several years ago, when West Lake Street was reconstructed, the intention was not to replace that sidewalk because it was underneath that retaining wall on that property. It was in good enough shape, similar to what Matt talked about earlier, so the decision was made not to replace it. The the property owner, since then, has done a conditional use permit to do some lakeshore work as well as some right away permits. I believe that sidewalk was removed because of that. And as part of our maintenance bond in the right away permit or the conditional use, now that we have a one year warranty, we should be able to talk with the property owner. I believe Eric was going to do that. If not, Randy and I can proceed with reviewing that right away permit and asking the property owner to replace those stones of sidewalk that may have been removed as part of that conditional use permit work.
Okay, thank you. So it's not it wouldn't fall into this plan. It's taken under a different set of considerations?
Correct. This should be it should be paid for by the property owner as it was it looks like it was it was removed because of the property owner's work.
Okay, thanks.
I'm really glad you brought that up, Mary, because I just wanted to also mention, I came across that in walking around town for the Knickerbocker Festival, and it comes it leads directly to a public access point on Rock Lake. So I think it 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 is a well used area of sidewalk.
Yeah, another place to look for it probably is is Google Maps. There's some historical pictures there, you can see where the sidewalk was and how far it went in in relation to that wall.
And then I do have one question on the street, street maintenance plan. In our comprehensive plan, West Madison is called out as one of our areas of opportunity for increasing bike and pedestrian safety. And I know this is not a construction because we're doing either a combination of the chip seal or mill and overlay, but where would we address this particular concern that's been noted in the comprehensive plan? Since we're touching West Madison, is there or can there be, should there be a conversation regarding how we address this aspect of safety? And I so I don't know how we align those two things.
Sure, I think the the great opportunity is this summer. With this project, with the new mill and overlay and the chip seal, all of the markings that are existing on the street will be removed or will be covered up. So we do anticipate as part of this project to at least put the center line back in center line markings. In the past, what we've done is we've coordinated with Jefferson County, in fact, Jefferson with Dane County through Jefferson County, to have Dane County come out to do mainline street center line markings. So if it is this board's preference to install bike lanes on this street, incorporating that into the pavement markings that would occur after the chip seal would probably be appropriate. I hope that helps.
So is that something that would go to Public Works for discussion?
Well, that's what I was wondering, if we would want to have Public Works Board look at that rather than just like issuing an edict here tonight.
Yes, that's what.
But I I'm glad you highlighted that, that that is, you know, one of our target areas that we would want to improve that safety. And like you said, it does seem like a good opportunity to do it. I've also noted, because that's my neighborhood, and I've noted, it seems like more people parking on West Madison, and I don't know if there's a change has been a change in parking lanes there, but that could also be contributing to the bike safety or lack of safety. So it may be something that the Public Works Board should look at a little bit more, and hopefully there's time to incorporate still incorporate that into the project. Greg, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, it's it seems like it should be something that goes to Public Works Board.
Yeah, and you've been you've worked on bike issues, you know, that's been something you that's been important to you as well, so.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Dwayne, on the street maintenance. I was curious why East Prospect Street was included for chip seal. It needs it. I mean, I I think the passer rating is accurate, but it's on our CIP for reconstruction.
You are seeing and making sure that Randy and I are not missing anything.
And I noted it on the spreadsheet, there was two different sections, and then also on the map, I think, all of all of Prospect Street is shown for a chip seal. So this is the east is the east of Main Street section.
So that would be this one. All right, let me zoom in. So this green line, I believe, and I sorry, it's a little small, I can't zoom in further. This is West Prospect and East Prospect by the elementary school. That is all chip seal and is all warranted for chip seal. The CIP program for Prospect Street starts at Birch Street and extends to Prairie and is not shown here. Now, if the spreadsheet, and this is what I haven't checked yet, Lisa, is does the spreadsheet, I don't think it's an error, but if it would be an error, yes, I would not want to chip seal that portion.
Okay, and I might have I might not have interpreted the street intersections correctly on the spreadsheet, but if that's the if that's what you're saying, the the part on the south side of the elementary school scheduled for chip seal and not reconstruction, and then the reconstruction next year would be to the east?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that makes sense then. I guess going from a detail to a bigger picture, and this was talked about a bit at the Public Works Board, but I don't know that it was really resolved, you know, what can we do to get back on a seven year cycle? Because if it means, you know, every seven years, we have to spend five times as much money, that doesn't seem like a good way to, you know, it seems like we should be able to try to shave that peak and and maybe invest a little more every other year to get us back, because the driver for this, as I understand it, is is to save money, and it also has a secondary benefit of providing better roads for our community, you know, roads that are in better condition. So I think the more we stray from seven years and getting into double digit years, you know, the less less funds we're saving and and, you know, despite the overall success of the program, I guess I just don't want us to be getting into where we have to make a tough decision one year because we need, you know, one point four million dollars for street maintenance and we have to sacrifice something else. So I don't know if that's a question or a comment, but I'm just curious, is it just that we need to put more dollars each year in order to be at that seven year? Or is it that we don't have enough staff?
Well, Dwayne and I have spent a good deal of time trying to put together a remediation plan, how to get back on track. Our big limitation right now is an inexperienced staff in the street department. They are, many of our staff members right now are young and have not done much as far as base patching, chip, crack sealing and things like that. This is all preparatory work that's necessary whenever we do any chip sealing or mill and overlay project. So we feel that the wiser course is to, for twenty twenty five, maintain the status quo, try and use this year as a learning year and use the three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars this year. And then in twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven, these could be our rebounding years where we would invest more financially because we would have a better skills set within the staff to do that preparatory work and take on more projects.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that you that you have have been thinking about it and and. So is it is it accurate to say that all the street and sidewalk may insist on in house then? We don't contract out for any of that?
We do contract some out. We obviously save more when we can do it in house. But we don't contract out typically crack sealing, potholing, base patching. We might contract some of that out if we have the work ready. But even when we contract that out, we have to do preparatory work for that too, such as excavating and cleaning it up and prepping it for the concrete contractor to come in.
So the staff expertise and number of staff is is a a big factor. It sounds like it's not just throwing more dollars at it to get us caught up, you need to have.
We want to use those dollars efficiently.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly, if I may add, I mean, I think I kind of touched on it, you know, we've been in that three hundred thousand dollar range for a number of years. You know, inflation has really ramped up in those years as well, and we haven't really kept pace. So I agree with Randy that maybe there's some argument for in twenty twenty six CIP budget to look to ramp that up a little bit. I I'm not recommending that we jump to that one point two five million and the one point four million just yet. I will add that those years, we were very, very, very busy. And then to kind of very busy and trying to keep up with the contractors, and in some cases, as Randy just said, when we do and what you're what you're approving tonight is this program, but also for us to move forward with our maintenance bids for concrete and asphalt. And if you recall, or may or may not recall, that we do bid items that include both contractor install or prepped and installed and also city prepped with the contractor installing. And so as Randy just said, there's an avenue for the more that we do with staff on the prep side, the more we can stretch the dollars in the maintenance program and touch more streets. Does that kind of help kind of expand on what Randy just said?
That does, yeah, and thanks to both of you. And I I I think it would be important to consider ramping it up, you know, starting in twenty twenty six so that we don't get, you know, even farther behind from the twelve year, and we can reap all the benefits of, you know, how successful this has been. this has been. And this is reminding, this is reminding us, this is general fund dollars, right? Because this is not utility for surfacing and sidewalk. Okay.
Yes, I will add that, in fact, I think there's 1 line in the sidewalk program that says water. If it's a utility cost, or it was caused by a utility, the utility pays for that portion.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't mention it, but in the spreadsheet for sidewalk, I think, so like the item that was brought up about Lake Street, if that would have been a potential that needed to be added to this project, note that there's about $2,000 to $3,000 in buffer that we built in for future complaints, or trip hazards that are notified to the Public Works Department between now and, say, this summer, when those sidewalks are being replaced.
Great, great.
In the last couple of years, didn't we have a hurdle where Jefferson County provided some chip and seal services that we had to kind of overcome, and that might speak to some of the surplus that we're talking about right now?
Yes, Jefferson County has discontinued that service recently, as you know, but.
Right.
But you're asking, I'm sorry.
Well, now, we're basically going to use a surplus that we had from the previous years for 2025.
Not, yes, but I don't think we're going to use all the surplus, but a substantial portion of it, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the 2025 street and sidewalk maintenance program? Okay, we need a motion and a second, then.
I move to approve City Council Resolution 25-11, approving the 2025 street and sidewalk maintenance plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Ms. Kuedno. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Sam, can you please call the roll on Resolution 25-11?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Kuedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for discussion. So, recommendations for future agendas, we do have March 6th is our Sandy Beach work session, it's a Thursday night, I think, right, at 5:30 PM? So, hopefully, everyone has that on their calendars, and then, I think that's, we have a council meeting a couple of days before that, will be our next council meeting. I don't have any ideas what might be on that agenda, does anybody have any suggestions for future agenda items? I think Drake did talk about something for wastewater would be at one of the, one of the 2 March meetings, I don't know which one.
An update on the water level order, I know that work is being completed as, over the last, across the last week or 2, so I think that might be a good timing for an update, possibly.
You would like to get an update from DNR, do you mean, or?
Or there might, an update just on the process, I know Eric is involved in spearheading that with DNR, so that might be a timely update.
Yeah, certainly, if there's, yeah, if there's anything to share, that would be great. Okay, seeing no other suggestions, thank you, everybody, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.